Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the. What's up?
Sorry.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the school committee meeting of October 13th. If everyone could please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So first up is the consent agenda.
I'm a question on my.
Sure.
I'm a 2.4.
Yes.
Um, why are we approving minutes of a meeting that we're not part of?
Um. Anyone? Anyone have a good response? Did they just get snuck in here? Not not snuck in here, but they just get put in of the minutes from the month possibly.
Um, if I may.
Yeah, sure.
Which minutes, Mike, are you referencing?
The two point, the building committee meeting. It's 2.4.
Well, I think the attorney would agree. The chair of the this committee does chair that committee. And the policy governance model also includes distributive agency, distributive decision making. And so several stakeholders within the community, within the school and on the school committee are members of that. And those are official minutes of an official subcommittee of the school committee.
I guess just the point being is that there was only, there's only one member on there in this. We're just voting on something that we weren't all part of.
We do that for policy, though.
As well.
Policy, safety, wellness, any other subcommittee?
My school, Torsha.
Yeah. Well, we'll agree to disagree on that because we didn't. If there was, if it's a subcommittee, why don't we have more members than one of us on there?
So I believe this has been explained, but that this is a mandated makeup of this policy of this committee, the subcommittee. So that would be one.
If I could just interject, we're all members of the Rhode Island School Committee Association. And they have, they can provide the rules and the guidance when we have questions like this. So I'm going to suggest that we refer to, and perhaps we can get some good answers. Because that that will help us all.
I can note. Yes. Tim Duffy?
I mean.
Perfect. That's pretty responsive.
Very. Can ask him. Okay. Can I include you on that email, Mike?
Sure.
Okay. Do you like to pull these minutes and hold them till the next month?
No. All right. I just, I just don't understand why we're approving something that we're not part of.
Okay.
Because, yes, it becomes a legal document, right? At the end of the day, that's what happened. So because the majority of us weren't there for that meeting. And that's why I'm asking.
Any questions?
You need to approve the consent agenda?
Have a second?
Second.
A favor? Hi.
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 Any opposed? Which carries? Oh, so welcome our attorney here. Hi, John Anderson.
Hi, John.
Um, welcome to Little Costa.
See you. Sorry. It is up next. English Language Arts Curriculum, ELA, educationally formed, formerly known as Expeditionary Learning. Who's taking this?
What do you mean?
Spacebar yourself.
All right. Um, so we have. Okay. So we have adopted a new K to eight, well, sort of new K to eight curriculum, EL education. I say sort of, is there are components of this that were formally engaged New York modules that we have used for many years? So portions of it are very similar to things we've used. And then at the K to two level, it is something new for us this year. Um.
Click.
Okay. Why? This is part of a curriculum mandate at the state level. We are required to have high quality curriculum materials. So this is one of the curriculum programs that do meet the state requirements. Um, so EL, a K to eight overview, the EL education, you know, language arts curriculum is a comprehensive standards based literacy program that engages teachers and students through compelling real world content. A three dimensional view of student achievement is promoted, which includes mastery of knowledge and skills, character, and high quality work. This is our school mission statement, which focuses on very similar attributes. And then this is the IB mission statement, which also focuses on similar attributes. So when the instructional leadership team was looking at the various options available to us, these were some of the key components that led us to moving in the direction of the EL education program. So this is what it looks like in a K to eight world. K to two have a more modules that are part of their content based literacy. And then they have reading foundations and skills block, which is where they learn all the beginning reading skills. At the three to five, grades three to five level, there's also the content based literacy. And then they have something called an all block, which is kind of the the middle ground skills that between the basic reading skills and the more content driven skills at the middle school level. And at the six to eighth grade level, it's composed of content based literacy units. And I'm just going to give you an overview of what it's looked like so far this year. We have got some really great work going on K to eight. One of our literacy teachers is in the audience. Cheryl has been working with grade six. So when we get there, I'll let her share with you. So kindergarten focuses on toys and play, weather wonders, trees are alive, and enjoying and appreciating trees are there for modules. It has a heavy focus on social studies and science in the modules. And this goes along nicely with the kindergarten has always studied trees. So this goes along nicely with what has been part of the Wilbur world. They go out and adopt their tree. So the first, the first module is about toys and play. What better way could kindergarteners learn and start their school year? They become play experts and toy experts. They go back and forth, learning about what makes a good toy. How do we play collaboratively? How do we play cooperatively? The module goes back and forth with them, right? With me writing notes to the class and the class writing me notes back. So this is a sample of a letter from Mrs. Segala's class, along with some of on the right or some of the learning objectives that they've, in I can statements. So I can use details from the text to explain how and why Mama Lama changes his mind about sharing. So the kids, the kids are, the targets are shared with them on a daily basis. So they know what they're learning and why they're learning it. First grade focuses on tools and work. The study of sun, moon, and stars, birds, amazing bodies, and caring for birds. So in the tools and work module, they're, they're learning about different tools and how things, why tools are necessary and what we use them for. This was one activity that the first graders do early on in the year. They're, they're working collaboratively to build the tallest structure. So everybody in the group had to work together to figure out how to make that happen. So not, this also has a lot of hands on activities where the kids are really doing. They're not just passively learning. Second grade talks about schools and community fossils tell of earth's changes, the secret, the secret world of pollination and providing for pollinators. Their current unit, the unit is about what is school and why are schools important? So the students are, they're, they're really, they're trying to figure, they're talking about schools all around the world and how, how, how we access education in different parts of the world. And in the end, they're going to, the culminating, one of the culminating activities will to write an informational book about the most important things about schools. Third grade focuses on overcoming learning challenges near and far, adaptations in the wide world of frogs, exploring literary classics. And they actually study Peter Pan in that unit and water around the world. This, the first unit where they're, they're really looking at why are education's books and reading important? So they're talking about how children read around the world. So this is a sampling of the different books that they're using to do that. Fourth grade, the first module is poetry, poets, and becoming writers. The second module is about animal defense mechanisms. Then they move on to the American Revolution and roundify on the 19th Amendment. This unit is, is a new unit to the fourth grade. And it focused on poetry, which was not something that was delved into deeply before. So this whole book is about a, a little boy whose teacher is reading them different poems. And it's, he, he really doesn't like poetry at the beginning. And he, he develops a respect for poetry by the end of the unit. So students are really being exposed to some nice poetry and figurative language. You know, so the, on the left are some comments of the kids. So it was the main character, Jack, doesn't like poetry at all. He's slowly beginning to like poetry. His ideas are changing. His teacher is reading different poems. And then there's, there was a poem about a dog in here that the little boy could really relate to because his dog had, had died in an accident. And the poem kind of brought that back to him and made, really made him feel. Fifth grade, this unit, the Esperanza Rising Unit, that's the human rights. The next module is biodiversity in the rainforest, athlete, oops, how do I go back? Athlete leaders of social change and the impact of national, natural disasters. So a lot of high impact topics. The, the sports unit is, is really interesting. Esperanza Rising is a really interesting book. The students are engaged and have the opportunity to grapple with complex texts together. They are exposed to difficult living conditions and closely analyze the overall theme of human rights. So then there's some comments of the kids. I think Esperanza, Esperanza is showing us how someone may live as they immigrate. Is teaching us about the lives of immigrants. We're learning about all of human rights and treating everyone fairly. Sixth grade. This, the first module is about Greek mythology. The second module is critical problems and design solutions. The third module is American Indian boarding schools. And the fourth one is remarkable accomplishments in space. I really loved the, the book, The Lightning Thief, that they, they do early in the year. And the kids' points here, we're talking a little bit, they, they learn about the task. The Greek, the Greeks were making important, the Greeks were important and they were making connections. Greeks taught us lessons that help us today. And then they were talking, I was, went into this class yesterday. And it was the students discuss the ways Percy demonstrated that he is brave. So they really had to do some deep thinking about how, you know, they never say Percy's brave. They, he demonstrates it through his actions. So they really were doing some deep thinking about that. And Mrs. Comley, would you like to, what's your favorite part of this unit?
I don't know. It's just, it's wonderful. I really like it. And I've read the book several times now.
Yeah. It, it's, it's putting the, the, Percy Jackson and Lightning Thief is really putting it into, to today terms for the kids. So they really can relate. Right? So it's really high interest for the kids. Seventh grade focuses on the lost children of the Sudan, epidemics, the Harlem Renaissance, and plastic pollution. So the students are reflective about how easy it is to have clean water and conveniences. While this is not the case in all the world. So one of the key questions is what can we learn from those who have survived the greatest tragedies? Then there's just some comments of the kids, you know, where they're really making the connections to, to how fortunate we are here today. They, they're thinking about, you know, that how, how difficult it is for others and really, really diving deeply into the text. And the final grade level is eighth grade, which module one is folklore of Latin America. Module two is food choices. Module three is voices of the Holocaust. And white, module four is lessons from Japanese American internment. And this, this book is kind of taking some, some classical literature, in this case, The Odyssey, and can, was reimagined in a, a kind of today story. So the, the kids are learning how and why they can read traditional myths and legends can be made meaningful and relevant to today's world. And some of the reflections of the kids, it keeps you thinking about the characters and the situation. Things aren't always what they appear. And the final comment of the eighth grade was, don't trust stockies. And then they say you have to read the book if you want to know why. Really high interest materials. The kids are really thinking deeply. They're learning to become critical thinkers. It's, it's really been great. Like I said, some units we've done in the past, it's added some other units. Like the unit on epidemics, it actually has a chapter, or they've updated the book. So it has a chapter on COVID-19. But so there's some things where they're really diving deeply into meaningful topics. So I just wanted to give you an overview and we will keep sharing with you what it looks like. And this is just an overview of the first module of each grade level.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Superintendent's report. 4.1, update on capital improvement plan, Studio Jade.
Okay. Could we cue the flyer for Tuesday night? Thank you so much. Maybe enlarge it quite a bit. Awesome. All right. We're at stage two of the ride necessity of school construction process. And if we want to enjoy reimbursement of 35% of more or more in some of our enhancements over the next 10 to 20 years, this process is absolutely necessary. We received a $50,000 grant to hire an architectural engineering firm to come up with this multi-stage document. We have had school community stakeholders engagement gatherings. And we are doing another one next Thursday night. And it will be here in this library media center. Just get that up a little bit. Six, start at six, be six to eight o'clock next Tuesday night. And we'll also have a Zoom link. So folks can be at home and also interacting in the evenings program. It is promised to be quite interactive, soliciting feedback and information from stakeholders, parents, grandparents, students, community members, school committee members, et cetera. And so we're pretty excited about that. And the process that we're engaged in right now basically has three tiers, deferred maintenance. And just the past few weeks, we had our steam table in the cafeteria go kaput. We have to replace that. That's a couple of thousand dollars. We had a major boiler leak. A video was sent to me regarding quite a lot of water coming out from under the pipe. We also had an alarm system failure two weeks ago. And that resulted in several thousand dollars worth of upgrades that, you know, we hadn't quite planned for. Some of the components was just a matter of there being obsolete or built in obsolescence or some of those sensors and so forth. So that's sort of the foundation of, of what this sort of plan will hold. That deferred maintenance is tier one. Tier two is capital improvements. And that's usually the building envelope, doors, windows. We do have some doors. Some of you did some volunteer work and some of our doors were very difficult to open, notably the one going into the oasis. So capital improvements are also a tier of this plan by Studio Jade, the architects and engineers. And then the third tier is that sort of aspirational tier around educational enhancements. We can't submit a plan to Department of Ed and the school building authority without ties to our instructional program, our academic program, our strategic plan regarding school culture, student achievement, et cetera. And so those are around furnishings tied to our academic program, new century modalities. You're looking at one right here. So that's where we are right now. We should have a plan completed with a lot of stakeholder engagement over the next four months by February. And so that plan will have these three chunks in it, deferred maintenance, capital improvements, educational enhancements, generally 10, 15 year plan. And it cost the district nothing, $50,000 in the grant for the architectural engineering firm, which has done a fantastic job. So I hope you can join us, those of you who are here right now and those at home. And the more stakeholder engagement we have, the better. So let's cue the timeline. Just give them a flash of the timeline. Should be up there. I did push some, I did push the flyer out on social media today. I'll be sending another flyer out with the Zoom link. And here's the community engagement schedule. Started October 1st for stage two and it ends February 15th. We submitted stage one in September. That process started in August. Our stage one was approved. And here we are. And I want to thank everyone, you know, who has been a part of the process so far. And welcome all of you who haven't been and would like to be. So see you next Tuesday, six o'clock, either here or on Zoom.
Great. Thank you. Are you also doing the, oh, I'm sorry. Does anyone have any questions? I'm good. Anyone? Are you also doing the human resource?
I'm going to hand that over to our positively terrific human resources coordinator.
All right.
She and I are trying to use the word positive.
Okay.
More than ever during COVID. And so obviously I'm winning that.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Superintendent. Just a quick report tonight. Three stipend positions were posted externally. Those were the math curriculum coach coordinator position, the science curriculum coach coordinator position, and the IB coordinator position. We will be appointing a science curriculum coach coordinator pending receipt of some paperwork. And we'll update the committee as soon as that is complete. We will also be appointing a title one math interventionist to assist at the middle school level. Again, once that is finalized, we will provide more detail to the committee.
Excuse me. I can't hear you well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Because of the mask, I think, I think.
Oh. Okay. I will try.
You don't have my voice.
I know. I don't have a nice teacher voice either.
Thank you.
Um, so I'm glad that you mentioned that because I'm wrapping up with, we are always looking for subs. We're always welcoming new subs and looking forward to orienting them to the building, to the school. So if anyone is interested in substitute teaching, they can contact the school and get in touch with me. That is. Anyone have any questions? And one. Okay. Moving on. Finance report, Mr. McNamara.
Okay. So we have, we've, we've pretty much closed out the fiscal year '21. And it looks like we'll have surplus of about $213,000. Right now, what we're looking at is the auditors are in, they're actually in this week. There probably won't be a final report from them until sometime in December. But at this time, I'm not looking at any adjustments at this point. So the 213 that we're going to show as a surplus for '21, add that to our accumulated surplus from last year, 57, puts us in a position to move into FY '22 with about 270,000 of accumulated surplus. So that's a good, that's a good news. As far as the FY '22 year would be basically just completed really one month, September, July and August, obviously are not big months. So at this point, I went through the budget and it's, it's presented in your report. And at this point, I don't see any unusual items that are popping up. We do have, for example, in revenue, I think we're going to be pretty much on target. I believe that we have probably one more tuition student. So we should be looking at about a $6,000 budget excess in that. So that's a positive sign. But as the superintendent indicated, we had some large expenses for the HVAC in the fire alarm system. So that's going to be eaten up by that. But at this point, it's really too early to, to make any projection. But it just, so we're hoping that we would, we'd be break even for the coming year. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you.
Is there any other COVID funds coming into us? Or do we, have we received everything that we're going to receive?
Well, we have. In fact, I applied for some more today because John Gabriel has given me some technology requests that we're going to be getting through some E-rate funding, which is a federal program, which is, we've got a portion of it sponsored by the CRF fund. So I think our first go around was about 28,000. And then we're going to get another six, so have about 34,000. But that basically is going to go for technology equipment that wasn't in the budget. We also have some technology funds in our REIT grant, a Rural Education Advancement Program grant. That was in the budget. So, you know, at this point, our S2 and S3 funding will all be new expenses. So it's not going to be anything that's going to supplant what we had in the budget. If we get anything in, but those are, I think, all the funds at this point I could think of that would be COVID related.
There was no, we didn't know when that was going to be distributed. The last time we had talked about that, as far as the S1 and S2.
So the, yeah, the S3 application isn't out yet. So we're hoping that that should be out by Friday. It's going to be done through the Rhode Island Department of Education. They have to approve the application once it goes in. So that those funds would then be submitted for approval. And the superintendent is actually working on that.
Is, that's the 141?
144.
144, yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions? Comments? I think it's enough, me. Moving on to committee reports, 6.1, policy subcommittee report. I'm going to wait till we get down to the action items where we will discuss the policy meeting and the policies. Portsmouth School Committee Liaison Report.
Thank you. I attended two meetings in September and the 14th and the 28th at the Portsmouth Town Hall for the Portsmouth School Committee. And just a few things I wanted to highlight that I thought would be interesting to mention was they're also looking to do some capital improvements as well. There's a bond referendum election on November 2nd, I believe. Some of the improvements would benefit Portsmouth High School. So students we have at Portsmouth just improving bathrooms, air conditioning, removing some asbestos. And they want to redo some of the outdoor walkways on the one way up to the, up to the school there. The PSATs took place today for underclassmen. So I'm hoping to hear good reports. So I'm hoping to hear good reports when they, all those numbers come in in a few months. They're also doing an equity analysis with the Equity Institute, which is based out of Providence, Rhode Island. They're looking to just highlight their strengths and find their areas that they need to grow. They're launching some data collection initiatives through different surveys and community forums with students and parents in Portsmouth. So I think that is going to be also very interesting to find out the analysis they're having done. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was a very good presentation done about the CTE programming that is at Portsmouth High School. They've really, I think, upped the amount of programming that they've had, especially since I've been there. They have CTE programs in art and visual design, child development and education, media communications and video production and in engineering. And there's going to be an open house at the high school on November 18th at 6:00 PM, all about CTE programming. So if there are any parents of current eighth graders that are interested in attending that, then I definitely recommend you go to that open house. And their next meeting will be tomorrow night at seven o'clock.
Thank you. Would that be some information that maybe we could push out to our eighth graders, our eighth grade parents?
The CTE information?
Yeah.
They do get that. It's part of their eighth grade orientations.
Okay.
And they get an overview of all of those different pathways.
Okay. Maybe if the workshop is available to them.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you, Hannah. Town Recreation Committee liaison?
Yes, we did have a meeting on September 13th. We had good conversation, particularly around maybe the use of the gym in the winter months. So I'm sure superintendent and administration will be hearing from the red committee about how we're going to approach that, you know? And they appointed a new chair, the fabulous Mr. Mack.
Oh, yes.
They also discussed the tennis court use and lighting, getting a study going to see if we can get some lighting in the evening.
The tennis court?
At the tennis courts, yes. And we set the dates for the next several meetings. Yeah, any questions? Pickleball interest, just see me.
Yes. Thank you, Rita.
You're welcome.
Wellness committee?
Oh, yes, again, we did have a meeting this week. We were able to welcome and appoint our standing members. We got a wonderful update on food services from Nancy Roberts from Chartwell's. And it kind of made us hungry. They're serving fabulous foods here, local when they can. We asked the policy committee and they graciously accepted our, our request to review our policy. So we're, they're reviewing the wellness committee policy. And we're about to establish dates for the next several meetings. Moving along.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Under discussion, have a discussion about staff feedback. Okay, cue the staff feedback.
Thank you, Jonathan. Awesome. As a counterpoint to the spring 2021 state survey for teachers using a rating scale, Principal Whip and I collaborated on an open ended survey this summer to harvest more specific, more meaningful, actionable responses. And we came up with, you know, a couple of open ended questions that elicited the data that we felt we needed to inform moving forward year two, well, actually year three of the pandemic, the second full year of the pandemic. And we posed the question during the last school year, 2020, 2021, as an educator or support staff member, what successes stood out for you and the students you worked with? And we weren't sure the responses would bring to us in terms of information and that we could synthesize and use. But, you know, we were very happy with the breadth and depth of staff responses. Staff members in every school I've ever worked in are always extremely candid and forthcoming. And our staff is no exception. Being able to teach in person, classes were successful. Dismissal was more streamlined than the previous years. The students got to spend a lot of time outside. Weekly testing was great. Making vaccines available to us was fantastic and we continue to do that. We worked together to the best we could for the kids and it showed. Our school did a great job in making it all work. The overall COVID plan was the best in the East Bay. This is fixed that I work in recess and small group rotations. So there's quite a bit up there. And this data has always been accessible. If you go on our website and look at our top channels, you'll see the channel for the 2021, 2022 school year has the reopening plan. And within the reopening, all of this data is accessible via a link. So we had a lot of really good, positive data that we felt, okay, you know, it's kind of a counterpoint to the data from the spring. When, you know, it gave us pause, some of it was humbling for the administration to look at and digest and et cetera, et cetera. So this was some really good stuff. And then we also asked another question during the last school year as an educator or support staff member, what challenges stood out for you and the students you worked with? And once again, our teachers are super candid, honest, forthcoming. And these were edifying as well and informed our, some of our processes moving forward. Students being confined to one classroom, well, we changed that. Our students are moving now from classroom to classroom. We, you know, looked at this feedback, no use of the gym. And so we are using the gym and it's nice that we have conditioned air in there and lots of circulation. It's awesome. Limitations on student interaction were hard. And so Principal Whip and I decided to make our staple pods double their size from last year. Each stable pod was half a grade level and it really was restrictive in terms of the interactions our students could enjoy. So we doubled those pods, the size of them, transporting recessed equipment, et cetera. We actually purchased a couple of dollies on, on wheels. They're excellent. And so we actually took this data, unlike, you know, a data from a rated scale. And we actually, we actuated it into processes this year. So we really do listen to our staff. More eco-friendly food containers, we'll get to that in a minute. They wanted tents of a smaller size, possibly not in mud. Not being able to meet on the rug, well, you know, that's certainly not, you know, that is guidance coming from the state. We're always worried when we see a staff member, I want to preface everything by saying this, you know? But even that was some positive data mixed in with the pointed suggestions that we had some rules that were conflicting and confusing for staff and students. Students being in one room, the majority of the day, we definitely fixed that, of course. And some staff members made it very clear that they did not like to do, you know, to teach on a cart. They were pushing into all the classrooms. We fixed that, I'd say for almost all of our, we have a couple of itinerants still, but we fixed it for most of our whole curriculum teachers. Many of our teachers did say teaching in the hybrid model where it was fully synchronous, having kids in front of you, having kids at home was more than a stretch. You know, there were pain points felt by everybody, students, staff, et cetera. And we definitely looked at that information. Stress due to everyday challenges with the schedule and technology. So it was disappointing that students were not able to come into the library and browse. We opened up the library. So we took this data and we actually shifted a lot of these components during the pandemic. So we've opened up the gym, we've opened up the library, we've opened up the cafeteria. We've opened up three cafeterias because we needed to keep the spacing in the distance. So we have an annex upstairs in the big art room. We also have an outdoor annex with six commercial grade picnic tables. We also bought some modular seating for outside on a dolly. A lot, that's being used just about every day, teachers like that. So, you know, we learned a lot from the spring to the end of the summer. That has informed still an incredibly challenging school year, given that we have this Delta variant, as we can have it. But here in Little Compton, I think we're doing well. And we want to thank our teachers for participating in both surveys and for assisting us in making changes that needed to happen.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions, concerns, comments?
I just have a question. What are your plans going forward in terms of getting continuous feedback or addressing some of these concerns that were not dealt with? Like the stress levels and teaching hybrid? I know we've had some students out lately because of COVID. So how are we mitigating those issues as well?
The work in progress and parents continue to reach out. Parents are very forthcoming too. So, so what, this year, we have no students permanently distance learning. So we don't have a permanent on the ready modality. And so if students are isolating or quarantining, they're literally coming in and out. And, and so we know it's temporary. They're out and it's temporary. And I'll give you one example. An elementary school parent reached out to me and she said, it's not like last year when my child was out. We had, you know, six and a half hours of screen time and that my child was in quarantine, et cetera. And, and, and I said, okay. Yes, that was the standing offering last year. From this data, we realized and from parent feedback as well. We have a lot of parent feedback from four questions we sent to our families this summer. They praised us and blasted us, you know? And, and so we really liked the breadth and depth of those results as well. So this particular parent, I did have a long conversation with the parent. I did get a report from the teachers and a printout of all points of contact while the child was in quarantine. There were several G-meets, there were several check-ins. And it was appropriate for that grade level. So what we learned from last year is to have a standing model for a five-year-old, that's the same for 14-year-old, certainly was not the most effective way to personalize instruction, which we can do here in a small school. And so each modality for a student in isolation or quarantine is different by grade level and age. And we haven't had a lot, you know? And they do come in and out now, but they can be tested on the fifth day, come back on the seventh. We've had a lot with, you know, weekends and long weekends. So I'd say the longest has been four days, perhaps four, four or five for quarantine kid. Kid, oh, not longer for a student isolating symptomatic or asymptomatic. And I'd say that we are moving towards a more systematic approach, age-based. And we haven't nailed it yet, but we're getting there. All teachers are reporting their various modalities by team and grade level. And Principal Whip is supporting teachers in anything they need. Our special educators have been incredible. The report that I received for the phone conference I had yesterday with the family, our special educator was the heart and soul of those interactions, as well as some other specialists and the classroom teacher. So from my spot audits, that's a strong word, but I'm checking based on parent feedback as they reach out to me. And I go through the principal for that, that is appropriate. And then she meets with her staff and gets all of the information I need. I think we're on point and we will continue to analyze, refine and personalize and systematize. And I think we're doing a good job, different from last year. And parents admitted last year was not perfect for their children. A lot of screen time, that's definitely also up on the website, a lot of that data, too much screen time. So this is a nice hybrid of modalities. Some analog, hard copy components, some in-person G-meets, synchronous components, and some asynchronous guided instruction components. And more social emotional support this year than ever. We've added, and that was also part of the spring survey, that our kids, our families and students really suffered, as, as did many of our professionals. With Cara DeJulio, who's on campus two full days a week. She, as a student assistance counselor slash behavior support specialist. We have Leslie Brackett as a second clinician, MSW. And she is on campus for three days. We've never had that in the history of this school. So those two equal one full-time equivalent clinician. Because, you know, Mary Elizabeth is absolutely, positively extraordinary at what she does. But she cannot service three-year-olds to 14-year-olds alone. And we also have Jamie Sunderland, who's here two days a week as well. And we have Nurse Dunn, who also does a lot of FCL support. I, no one can be in her office and not see children come in just to see her and her smiling face and her warmth. It's, you can feel her energy. So this building has never had more than the amount of support that it has now. This will continue. It is hooked into IDEA Part B and also Title IV, using our federal grants to fund some of these positions and also the region. So we're being very resourceful. We're rubbing nickels together and giving our kids everything they need within the limits that we have. We don't have an endless supply of money and human resources. And, and trying to give our staff as much support as they need. Since Every Student Succeeds Act of 2015, all those mandates are coming to bear right now as the reforms in Rhode Island. And that includes high-quality curriculum, ELA science with the 2025 dot drop dead date, 2023 for ELA and math. And also the Right to Read Act. That's also part of the, you know, 2015 Every Student Succeeds Act, a bipartisan federal initiative. So we are, we have all of these things converging during a pandemic. And, you know, these are challenging times, but I think we're all on the same page, definitely. And we just keep on analyzing, refining and checking in. We're doing the best we can and our teachers know how much we support them and care about them and value them.
Yes, I, you mentioned that. Could you, do you have a number for how many kids were in quarantine?
Excuse me? Sir, could you give us your name and your? And your address, please?
24 Oliver Lane.
Thank you.
Just anecdotally, we had four cases, school related. Well, two cases school related and screened here. Two cases screened elsewhere, school related. The first two kiddos, we certainly don't want to attach quarantine and isolation cases to children. So we've had anecdotally related to positive cases, close contacts related to positive cases, not kids with sniffles who need to be out for a day until a PCR can clear them. We've had, by my estimation, 45, 45 or 46.
You're saying by your, is that a fact?
I, I'm just, I don't have it in front of me. But those Will McManus students who were close contacts of four positive cases.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hannah?
I just wanted to say thank you for putting this survey together. And I'd like to ask that we I just wanted to say thank you for putting this survey together and I'd like to ask that we continue surveys like this, when possible, maybe. And bringing them to the, the school committee because I mean, tonight's a special circumstance, but we don't always see the amount of teachers in the audience as we're seeing tonight. So it's really good to have some feedback straight from the teachers and anecdotally, like you said, in these, in these long, open-ended type of answers, I think really help capture what's going on in the school a little better than the data points might in the survey works.
Right, the weighted scale.
So if we can continue bringing those to the school committee, I think I'd appreciate it especially.
And it's actionable and there was a very high participation rate.
Thank you. Any more committee members with questions?
Yeah, I just want a second one Hannah's saying. To see this before the end of this school year would be huge, just to see where there's areas of improvement and certainly things that we can continue to address.
Absolutely.
And now, um, in the Zoom meeting, I'm gonna ask, and this goes for in-person comments, we'll always go to the committee first for questions on an agenda item and then we'll reach out. And when we call on you, please state your name and your address.
So Stephanie D, I think was first. You should be allowed to unmute yourself now.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, guys. My name is Stephanie Dionne. I live at twenty-four Amy Hart Path and I currently have two students enrolled in Wilbur McMahon. I just wanted to correct something. One of my children was actually out of school for eighteen school days due to COVID-19. My major concern is during eighteen days of school being missed, I was only given six days' worth of the assignments for my child. Um, yes, that's true. Um, I had to contact the principal. I didn't hear from a school counselor until the day before my child was due to go back to school. I'm very concerned about this. I do understand that the state dropped distance learning, however, I do think that we need a much better system to educate children who are unfortunately quarantined due to COVID-19. I was left to get a subscription to an education website so that I could help facilitate the lack of schoolwork that I was getting. Um, this is a huge concern. Eighteen days to a second-grade child is a big deal. And to only receive assignments for six of those days, that's not, that's, I don't think that's a good job educating children. I think you guys could do much better. I think that there needs to be a much better plan in place for children because unfortunately, we are going to have to deal with this for some time. And we can't just throw together a plan at the last minute. I believe my child was the first to test positive at Wilbur for COVID. And unfortunately, my children seem to have been the guinea pigs for Wilbur to figure out how we're going to deal without distance learning. This is a huge problem. I'm still waiting to get answers or hear back from people. We need to do better. We can't just drop children who unfortunately become positive with COVID. We need to worry about their education. We need to worry about their mental stability. We need to do better. Wilbur needs to do much better. My children fell through the cracks. And I don't want to see it happen to another student ever. Or a parent to be left in the lurches and not know what to do. So I really hope in the future, you guys try a lot harder to come up with a much better system to educate children. Because education is important whether they are quarantined or not. Eighteen days is a big deal to a seven-year-old child.
Ms. Dionne, thank you so much for sharing this. I am so sorry this happened to your children. I'm looking at all of my communications here. I have, I do not see your name.
I never even heard from you.
Did you email me?
I didn't. I emailed the principal several times, but she did call me back, but I never heard from you personally. I heard from Mrs. Whip. I heard from my child's teacher. And I also heard from Mrs. Miller, the day before my child was to return to school. And it took seventeen days for a school counselor to worry about how my child was doing emotionally. That's not okay.
I wish you had contacted me directly.
I contacted the principal. I heard you say that you all communicate back and forth, but maybe I'm wrong.
We communicate when a parent reached out to me. I was not aware of this.
I, I didn't know that I had to contact every single staff member. I thought the principal was a good contact. And I'm sorry if she didn't pass this information along to you. But we need to do much better, much better.
Moving forward.
I'm heartbroken at the way my children were dealt with from this school. I really am.
Moving forward, I can't speak to the specific issues. I don't know the whole story. Please do not hesitate to contact me anytime there's a concern regarding communication.
So is, is there a plan in place to better deal with quarantine? Do we have a lesson plan? Do teachers have what they need to get these things to, how come I only got six assignments in eighteen days? Do you consider that a quality education?
I'll be looking into that and I will be with you.
I hope so. I'm still waiting to hear back from people, so I really hope so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dionne.
The next person was Jen Rocha is the username. You should be allowed to unmute if you want to say your name and address.
Hi, I hope you can hear me. This is Jen Rocha. I'm at one oh five Willow. I'm a grandparent of a student in the second grade and an upcoming kindergarten, kindergartner, and also a local school nurse at a different district. My questions were about the statistics you listed regarding COVID cases in the school. I'm a little bit confused as to the numbers. If you could just repeat them, it's hard to hear with the masks on. Was it me? Was it four students? Yes, I'm sorry. Was it four students that have tested positive in forty-five cases? I'm, I'm not understanding that math.
Close contacts of positive cases.
Are forty-five.
That was a guess at it. I don't have the information in front of me.
I'm just curious and I, but I heard the number four cases come out. Is that four positive?
Four positive cases that I'm aware of.
Okay. And are those out in-school transmission? Can you, can you link those back to another student or staff member that's positive? So those are all outside of school?
Yes.
Terrific. Thank you very much. That was it.
Thank you. Didn't we have another hand now?
There was another hand, but two more hands now.
Okay.
You have the database.
Go from the top down. Chardier, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Kimberly Chardier nine High Meadow Road. Um, the question I have is, out of the four positive cases, the forty-two remaining people that were in close quarantine, did any of those end up with testing positive for COVID?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, so everyone that was quarantined didn't have any symptoms whatsoever?
Nurse Dunn would know better than I. But I know of the four positive cases, I push out the messaging when we have positive cases that come to my attention.
Okay, thank you.
And the next person is Mary Kate. You should be able to unmute yourself. Name and address, please.
Mary Kate, are you able to unmute yourself and speak? Yes, no?
I see the mute icon. It should be in the bottom left, unless you're on a mobile device, you might have to tap on the screen first to see it.
Tablet, it's different on a tablet.
Oh, no, okay. Is it possible, Mariah, for you to put your email in the chat box? So if anyone is having difficulty unmuting and sending a question, that they would have another option to do so? Is that cool? Thank you.
We got one more hand since then.
Mr. Lord?
You should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, Roger Lord, twenty-nine Bramblewood Cross. Do you have the equipment to administer rapid testing at the school?
I see. Yes, we do. We do it every week, Roger.
Okay, so if some student is showing symptoms, you're able to test that student right there?
Yes, we also do symptomatic testing at point of need. But we do asymptomatic testing every Monday. It's on a Tuesday if the Monday is, I think, holiday, et cetera.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Matt Nicole, three B Old Main Road, just on the topic of we're talking about staff feedback, somebody's asking about tracking stuff over time. And in the spirit of like COVID should not be the most important thing in our lives, I would be thrilled to help with that program in any way possible to try to get those things described and see how people are feeling about them over time. I've done this type of thing professionally for years, so please let's keep moving forward. I'm happy to help with that, so.
Thank you, Matt.
And that's just on that topic.
Thank you. Okay, we're all good here? Move on? Okay. Next discussion item is cafeteria trays. So couple of years ago, yeah, yeah. It was brought to our attention by a one of our students that they would like to, like for us to explore the option of using compostable trays in our cafeteria. She actually gave us some ideas. She came to a meeting, very eloquently stated her case. We had Chartwell's on board with us and we were moving forward and COVID hit. So she reached out this past month for an update.
I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
She said we could use her name because she came before us publicly. I would imagine. So Willburn McMahon School, we have our own brilliant Greta Thunberg and and Margery Leary, JoJo, as she is known, and she is a champion of the environment. And she has been pushing for biodegradable and/or compostable cafeteria food containers and serving trays for the past few years. And we were on our way to doing that last school year, the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, we were all set. And we all know what happened March twentieth, twenty twenty, schools shut down. And suddenly our servery was shut down and now we have a modified servery, even though we've reopened the cafeteria. Kids are no longer eating at their desks in their classrooms. They actually get to move and to another venue. And so I did reach out to Linda Benedetti. She is Chartwell's Director of Dining Services for Middletown, Portsmouth, Chivenham, Little Compton. And she did say that she agrees, just like she did a few years ago, that this is doable. However, right now the supply chains are absolutely stalled. And that other districts would move to biodegradable and compostable containers and trays. They're also stalled, their programming, and they had to revert to the less environmentally friendly materials. And so I want to give a public update to JoJo that we will revisit this next summer with Chartwell's. We will bundle it into our budget for next year because the biodegradable and compostable components are a bit more expensive than the less friendly versions. But we will be prepared, if the supplies are available, to launch this next year, and that will be her eighth-grade year. And we thank her for the care and concern for her community, local, regional, greater world community. And we're just so grateful that she is an advocate for this planet or and moving forward if the supplies are.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions on the committee? Anyone in the audience have any questions?
We do have one hand.
Okay.
Sorry, I moved windows. There you go. Kat Wardell is the username. If you can unmute yourself and give your name and address.
Good evening, everybody. Kat Wardell, five East Main Road, Little Compton. I'm sorry to go backwards. I just, I, I've just been thinking this over. My friend Steph Dionne spoke pretty clearly about how she was a little upset about how things went during quarantine. And my question is, is since we do have distance learning days on the calendar, why or what is standing in the way of letting the kids do a little distance learning if they are quarantined going forward?
All right, thank you, Chuck. We are still doing distance learning. It's just not synchronous all day long from eight thirty to three o'clock. So distance learning is happening. And I have been given evidence thereof. There are synchronous components, G-meets going on in just about every grade level when kids are in quarantine. There is some asynchronous guided instructional components. There are check-ins and I have been assured that these processes are in place and being refined, analyzed. It's unfortunate that the Dionne children experienced what they did. I'll be looking into that. And I'm having a conference with, with parents. I'll be reaching out to you. I need to know more. I can't speak to it right now.
Okay.
But, so cat, distance learning is happening. It's just not synchronous live all day long like it was last year because it was a permanent option. Every teacher had a permanently distance-learning student in his, her or their classroom. It's different this year. In-person learning has been prioritized and encouraged for all. And the options for isolating and quarantining kids continue to be systematized. And after the feedback from tonight, it will be a priority of my office.
Good, good to hear. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Two more hands. First one was Mary Kate Kanane.
Okay.
If you want to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Mary Kate, one ninety-seven East Main Road. I'm sorry to be going back as well, little technical difficulties here. But I just wanted to comment along with Mrs. Dionne's, you know, story that she shared. My three children were part of that group of forty-five that has been quarantining. We missed five full days last week. I'm gonna second that, that all three of our homeroom teachers never reached out. The principal never reached out. The school nurse called me every single day to ask the story again and again. And I kept telling her our information. She asked me to go get all three kids tested. We did that. We proved negative test results, two tests per child, that's six tests, and we still were not allowed back in school. Which was fine. I was willing to do the safe thing, stay home. I was a little surprised that not one teacher had heard from the school nurse that this was what the Kanane family was doing. I think there needs to be more communication between when the school nurse is making these calls. You know, she's the one telling me that we can't come back to school. She needs to then be turning around and telling our homeroom teachers. It should not be us parents reaching out to each of the teachers saying, hey, we're in quarantine, where's our work? There was no hard copy work. I got told on the third or fourth day, oh, there's Google Classroom. We were a homeschool family last year. I have no idea what Google Classroom is or, you know, where things are. So to just assume that us parents know where to pick up the missing pieces is a little much. Our teachers were great at Our teachers were great at including my kids on day five in morning meeting. My two youngest kids, my third grader was asking why she wasn't being asked for in morning meeting. I know the teachers were stretched thin last year. I don't blame them. I know that this is outside. Of what they're being asked to do this year. I get that. But there needs to be an in-place protocol of what these kids are doing when they're home for this amount of time. Because there was not enough work. There was no check-ins of like, hey, we miss you, we care. It wasn't until I made that contact with each of our teachers personally on Parents Square. That they then caught on that we were in quarantine. So. I think my big thing is that there needs to be more communication. If the school nurse is the one calling the shots on who's quarantining. And she needs to tell Mrs. Whip or she needs to be telling our homeroom teachers directly. This is the families that are in quarantine. Let's get them some work. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Kate.
Thank you.
Roger Lord also has his hand up.
All right. Hi, Mr. Lord.
Go ahead, Roger.
Hi, I do not have my hands up, but I see. Now I don't. Sorry.
Nice try. So no question right now?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just follow up to Laurie for a second?
Yes.
So question is, so we've heard from three different families or so. Is us. Is it not possible for us to go live for these kids that are quarantining at home? For to have in classroom. Instruction because it seems like. This is a problem. And I know you need to check into it and in all fairness, and I understand that, but I mean from a. Can we even offer that to them? I mean, we offered it last year and I know that everything needs to be in. They want everything in person and I understand that. And then these particular cases where these kids are being sent home and not being allowed to come back in, but. Is that an option?
Absolutely. Certainly not the way it was last year, full day. It wasn't optimal and we had the feedback and data to. I'm sitting here shocked because I have been assured that. Processes were in place. The audits that I did were thorough and. That maybe one of the parents was on there right now. And I was pleasantly surprised at what my expectations had been met. I can't speak to these instances. I was not aware of them. When a parent has made me aware of any sort of perceived. Breach or failure of the system. I stepped in and the information I rooted out. Absolutely overwhelmingly on point. So I'm confused and. Definitely energized to get to the bottom of this. And to ensure that there is a. Preschool through grade eight system in place. And it may mean. Processes beyond this room. With staff, you know, we do have contracts in place. And working conditions in place and so forth. So I can't speak to those. But. I am energized to get to the bottom of. Anyone who knows me knows if they reach out to me. They hear from me immediately and action is taken. I wasn't told by some of the parents that some of this was going on and some of our systems obviously failed. For that, I am sorry and. It will not happen again to any child on my watch.
Just to follow. We have no restrictions from the state though, right? As far as us doing that, going live with them on our. No. Okay.
Thank you, Laurie. Thank you, Mike.
One more hand in the audience, Stephanie Dion. You should be able to unmute.
Hi, hi, this is actually Justin Dion. I'm Stephanie's husband, 24 Amy Hot Path. I'm just curious as to why. If you guys had all summer, I mean, it had to be known that there were gonna be positive, like. This is no surprise that this was going to happen. Why was there no? If there was no restrictions by the state, why was there no distance learning still at least put in place? For this situation that everybody knew was gonna happen, you know what I mean? Everybody knew this was gonna happen. That's why you guys are testing every week. It's, you know, I'm sure that's not fun. You're not doing that for, you know. You know, to have a good time. Everybody knew that there was gonna be positive cases. There was gonna be quarantine. Why was this not put in place? Already like what, what, what were the discussions that happened throughout the summer? And nobody, nobody brought this up. Nobody said, hey, maybe we should leave this on the table. Well, I just help me understand how. That process goes completely awry. Help me understand that.
That's a fair question and discussions did happen over the summer. If you remember, the state did tell us that we could not offer a permanent distance learning option. Data did reveal that an all-day distance learning option was not optimal. I directed.
Optimal? How about, how about just? Was not optimal.
I absolutely agree and I will investigate that. I was told that there were options that were specific to each grade level and that were responsive to student needs. I was assured this. That said. I'll be looking into this and we will be systematizing absolutely across the board.
To where, I mean, I just, I'm just curious as to where the accountability lies. I mean, where's the accountability lie in this? It just. It doesn't make any sense. It doesn't make any sense when this is your. Everybody's job to educate these kids and to see. Kind of everybody, I just don't understand. Everybody knew this was gonna happen and the best, the best option that there was, was that. Homeroom teacher would get in contact with the student maybe once a day. And in the case of my youngest daughter. Once every six days. I mean, that's ridiculous, ridiculous. It's. It's ridiculous.
Oh, I agree. I absolutely agree. I had no idea we had children out for 18 days.
Well, yes, my, my youngest was out for 18 days because her. My oldest tested positive first. And even though my youngest had negative tests. Three negative tests. I'm sorry, no, two negative tests. She still wasn't allowed back. And then she ended up with a positive test at the. I think it was the five or six day mark of her close contact quarantine. So her. Her quarantine started all over again. We did everything that we were told to do and it was inevitable. That's my point is this. This is not going to happen to just us. This is gonna happen. You know, it's gonna keep happening. And I just. I don't understand why it had to happen before somebody realized this was gonna happen.
All of our, all of our teachers have G-meets, all of them. In boards. All of them have a lot of support in the classroom from specialists. Moving forward, this will not happen.
Okay. All right, I guess my, I guess I guess. My hangup is, is, is just, how did you guys not know this was going to happen? And why did, you know? Why, why was the school not prepared to. Educate these kids on a day-to-day basis while they're home? You know that you're kicking them out for 10 days minimum. Or seven days if they have a negative test, but 10 days. You know what I mean? Like, I don't understand how there's no plan to educate kids when they're home for a 10-day period. Why it like? How, how it, I just, I don't get it. I don't get it. And. There's nothing that can be done about my kids now, but I don't understand how there wasn't a process already put in place. And I'll just, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Dion. As the superintendent has stated, I'm sure she will do a. A thorough look into this and see where the. Where the hangup was and reach out to you with a plan to move forward. Fair enough.
Yes, thank you.
I see another hand now.
We did have one, but it looks like they put it down.
Hi. Oh, now we're on public input. If anyone has any public input, you can comment now. Or you can wait until the item that you want to comment on is up for discussion. School committee will be commenting on it. And then we'll be reaching out to the public as I said before. And again, please state your name and address and. That's it. Got any comment now? Megan Gonzalez?
You should be able to unmute. Maybe not. I think her hand went down before I clicked the button. Good fact. There we go. Okay, try now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Megan Gonzalez, 19 South Shore Road. And I can definitely feel everyone's frustration with the quarantine. Distance learning thing happening this year. I know that teachers are completely stretched and everyone is definitely trying, but. I definitely feel more comfortable, Laurie, now that you said that you would reevaluate the plan. I think that. Some children are able to. Go to a Google Meet and follow independent instructions. But not all students are able to do that. And not all parents are able to. Be there as a one-on-one instructing their child to the next. Classroom assignment. So I definitely think that it would be wonderful to just reevaluate that. The plan that's currently in place.
Thank you. I just now had a parent reach out to me saying that. Our Student Support Services team also did not reach out. So here we are shoring up our Student Support Services staffing. And one will be assigned for our kids in quarantine. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Two more hands.
Three more.
We'll go alphabetically here. Sardier. You can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, Kimberly Sardier, 9 High Meadow Road. I just want to say that I just don't think that there is. A policy in place when kids are sent home. Being positive or being a close contact, but. One of my children was sent home for 10 days after the fourth day of school. And I was really lucky, I guess, compared to the other three parents that. Experienced something different than I experienced. I had the teacher, I had the nurse reach out to me. And then I had the teacher reach out to me. And we were the very next day doing virtual learning every single day during the quarantine. So I had a totally different experience. And I just want to say that obviously it needs to be more consistent, no doubt, but. I just wanted to say that I'm sorry that that happened to the other kids because I can't imagine if that happened with my child. But I guess I was one of the lucky ones, but I just wanted to state that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jen Rocha. You should be able to unmute next.
Hi, it's Jen Rocha, 105 Willow Ave again. Just to touch upon broken policies. Again, my second grade granddaughter was sent home from school as a close contact. She's the child that has high anxiety. Mrs. Dunn is aware of this. Her classroom teacher is aware of this. Several of the staff members are. And she sat for, I think it was about a half an hour. I can't speak directly to the time. And nobody told her why she was being sent home from school, just that she had to gather her belongings and wait for her mother to come. Nobody told her why, as she was escorted out of the school. Her mom was told, there's paperwork in your bag with everything you need to know. And that was the extent of it. If we have all this support with adjustment counselors, why isn't anybody meeting with these children? And that was a traumatic experience for her. And is that something that we can look at? That can we use this time? I mean, we know that there's all this S R two money that's floating around out there just waiting to be used. Can someone, you know, just be. This could be their job is to work with these kids and answer their questions.
You want to. Very good points. I mean, I, I think on that particular day, there were so many kids involved and it was, it was happening very quickly. But yeah, there's a lot of things that can be. Reimagined and put different protocols put into place.
I'm not sure, is my mic still live? And that was my other question, not to keep beating a dead horse. I know this meeting has to continue. There's lots of stuff on the agenda, but. Forty-five contacts for four positive cases. You don't have to be a math genius to know that's 11. Per contact. Why so many? Are we not six feet apart with masks that won't burn?
Okay, we are. Most of those are bus contacts and a bus is narrow and shallow. And so the catch, the catchment is so huge.
Okay, but by federal law, there are no contacts on the bus. If all the windows are supposed to be open, the kids are supposed to have masks and you don't have to contact. And the students aren't sitting in graduated cohorts. They're not sitting with, you know, siblings first and then classmates and then grade mates. It's just kind of a free-for-all.
Okay.
So again, in this particular case, had this child been sitting, you know, in a graduated cohort, she would not have time off learning for six days.
The seating charts and the catchment that we are required. To document and consider close contacts comes right from the Department of Health. And unlike any other space, it really is because of, you know, just so narrow and shallow. Yet each time we get a positive case, we go, oh, God.
Rhode Island schools don't follow the federal requirement of windows open and students masked?
Windows are open, students are masked, but we still have. A closer, tighter catchment in a bus.
So how many, how many students out are you going? Like, how many seats away? So they're two to a seat, right? How many seats forward, backwards? I'm just trying to wrap my head around why 45 kids were. Excluded from school. I understand everyone's trying to do the right thing. But we also, you know, we've heard everyone on the committee say how important it is for these kids to be in class.
Well, buses are capacity this year. Or last year, they couldn't be. They could only be, they were at half capacity. So that sort of doubles the catchment there. Yes, we do, you know, we, we expect our siblings to sit together. So then that's. You know, a smaller catchment for, for those siblings, those kiddos. We found out that's not always the case with, on some of our buses. We have reached out to the bus company regarding that. Principal Whip can give us sort of a visual picture of just how that catch.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, how many seats, you know, forward, backwards and across are being excluded. If you were contact tracing today, how many seats would you go forward?
What the, the guidance that we're given is it's the seat that the individual is sitting in. Two rows before, two rows after, and on both sides.
It's a big.
And that came from the Department of Health?
It's, it's from the Outbook, the Outbreak Response Playbook, which is a collaboration of Department of Health and RIDE. Each time I hear that, that, you know, we have positive cases, my first question is. Are these scholars taking the bus? Because we know our close contact numbers will be high. Because of that catchment and it's doubled this year because of capacity. And, and, and this last time, we actually had one of our monitors go out and take a tape measure and measure and. That's truly what the six feet. Distance is. I mean, we've. Proved it to ourselves.
That is the toughest catchment. It is, and I do, I do contact tracing for a living. So that's why I'm curious how you're arriving at these crazy numbers, but thank you.
Thank you.
Next up was Andrew Ryan. If you want to unmute yourself, state your name and address.
Hi, Andrew Ryan, 40 Pageant Brook Road. Thank you very much for very much spending so much time on these important topics. I just had a, a quick comment, a couple of quick comments. I, I think. When you have a large number of quarantines that happen because of a bus and, and maybe three or four classmates are out in quarantine. It might be worth sending the class a generalized note. That they're in quarantine, that their classmates are in quarantine. Our kids, you know, noted to us when they came home that I think three of their classmates were, were missing. Our kids, you know, noted to us when they came home that I think three of their classmates were, were missing. And so you, you know, your mind starts to, you, you know why they're missing probably, but you don't know if they were positive cases or if they were just quarantine close contacts. And I just think it would be helpful communication-wise when you have something that's that, that widespread that, that maybe you communicate that out a little bit broadly because it impacts so many people. It reaffirmed my reason for not letting our kids ride the bus this year, even though they wanted to. Just pretty, you know, it's just, I just am so, I just, this, it's, it's so, so challenging for everyone and it's so heartbreaking to hear the, the struggles that kids have. And I remember when our kids were trying to distance learn at three years old, it was, it was impossible. And so I also think maybe that you shouldn't, you should really look at hiring someone that's sole job is, or maybe two peoples, that sole job is to, is to care for the education of, of people in quarantine or isolation. Because the teachers, I'm a faculty member and, and, you know, we, I spent all last year in Zoom with students in quarantine or isolation. And I'm lucky now that we have basically no cases on campus because everybody's vaccinated. But, but it was really hard at a college level to operate that. And I cannot imagine trying to deliver fifth grader, fourth grader, deal with my kindergarteners at, at a, at a level like that. And, and it's how challenging that must be. But, but I think if you hired a few people, and I know budgets are always really tight here in Little Compton when it comes to the school. But, but I think, you know, if you really looked at hiring a few people to deal with this, especially considering that, you know, we, we might be in for another year or half year of, of this. I'm hoping that we can get, you know, vaccine mandates for children in school and we can get beyond this. But we might be living through this for the, for the, you know, the winter semester. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last hand up at the moment is just Amanda is the username. If you could unmute and state your name and address, please.
Yep, it's Amanda Morton. I'm at twenty Pottersville Road.
Thank you, go ahead.
Yes. I just wanted to comment on, my son was actually one of those children that, in second grade that had to quarantine. And the same thing happened to him. I went and picked him up and he got brought out to me. And another mom was outside whose daughter is in my son's class. And she told me that the kids weren't even told why they were going home, that they were just handed their backpack and told them to pack up their bag with all their stuff and there, I was coming to get him. So when he got in the car, he looked at me and he's like, Mom, what's going on? Why am I going home? So I was like, oh buddy, I said, you came in contact with somebody on the bus. So I just feel like, you know, like the way that all went down was pretty traumatic, especially for a seven-year-old. And then as far as the work goes, I didn't hear anything from his teacher until he got sent home Monday at two thirty. I didn't hear anything from his teacher until Wednesday morning. And then he got two days' worth of work and that was it.
Okay, thank you. I, the superintendent has been taking notes like crazy over there. She's, I'm sure going to reevaluate all this, check in on everyone. And I'm sure she'll be reaching out to everyone about their experience.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
All right. Action items, nine one, consider, discuss and vote to amend the student dress code policy. First read. So a while ago. Oh, here it goes. Okay. So we had recently amended our dress code. But we had to add our about the the masks. The previous dress code had had a statement that if anyone refused to wear a mask, that they, in an instructional setting, it would, and it couldn't be resolved, they would have to participate in full distance learning. So full distance learning is not an option this year. So we had to amend that line to fit what was going on this year. So that's what we did. This is a first read, so there's no vote, but there certainly can be some discussion. No discussion on the dress policy? Come on. All right. Nine point two, consider, discuss and vote to adopt the COVID-19 vaccination requirement policy. This is also a first read. So this has not been in your packets for very long because our policy meeting was last night. So you know that, or I put it in the packets as quickly as possible for everyone to check out. So does anyone have any changes, thoughts, concerns?
I have a suggestion.
Okay.
That came from our policy meeting last night in regards to this policy. I would like to suggest that we include a rapid testing option at applicable indoor school events in lieu of showing a vaccine card. I think that it's, it can still be safe at certain events that are held indoors to have a rapid test done prior to entering the building or prior to going further into the building. So that parents and others can still participate in these events. And that would be up to the discretion of administration, perhaps which events, which types of events this would be needed for.
I've given that some thought too, after our meeting. I then wondered if we wanted to consider PCR tests a couple of days before to have a more positive result. I then was concerned that we were making a policy and then having kind of a loophole in it, which concerned me. And then it also concerned me that we were taking precautions to admittedly have a very drastic policy, a very serious policy where we would not allow unvaccinated people in the building. But then we might, and so then they're in our building again. I don't know, I've had this, it's only been twenty-four hours, so I've had a lot of bouncing around in my head about this.
I thought about those two and I think that the way I thought about it was, in my mind, applicable events would be things that probably aren't even happening this year. As far as we know yet, depending on how cases are trending and things like that. Most of the events that were put on last year, sporting events, graduations, they were all outdoors. So this policy wouldn't even be like necessarily needed for events like that. I'm thinking maybe if there were to be some sort of open house or band and chorus concert that was a shorter period of time that the, those who aren't unvaccinated and wish to attend could, yes, either show, I'm totally on board with a PCR test or a rapid test to be able to attend those events. I seeing as though they might not, they're very few and far between, I feel comfortable being able to. And they'd also be wearing masks in accordance with our mask policy. I think that that, it's still a safe option to at least consider going forward for the second read. And then if, I don't know if anybody else wants to comment on that. I do have another suggestion, but I can wait if we want to continue that discussion.
I have something completely different, so.
Okay, so you wait till she's done? Is that okay?
My second suggestion is that we codify when this policy is going to end. We can maybe review it either in July or August's meeting ahead of next school year. I know there was a lot of fear last night. It seems that this is going to be forever. And a simple just reassurance on the policy subcommittee's side that we will continue to look at this might not be effectual. So I'm hoping that maybe we can just codify that this will be reevaluated ahead of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. And given the circumstances we have next summer, we can either retire or amend this policy as needed.
I do like that.
Thank you.
It was because we were assuring people, but I've been like you before, not by me, but you know, I, I mean, I, I understand people's concern that we wouldn't revisit it under the circumstances.
I get that as a concern.
Any more, any comments on Hannah's point? Mike?
I guess my first thing is that because this building is a multi-use building during the time, during the day and as well as at night, what this vaccination policy that you're proposing, what is going to be the effective hours that these are going to be in place?
What are the effective hours?
Right. So we don't, we don't
It would be for, uh, twenty-four seven. Is that what you mean?
Yeah. So are we, are you proposing that even when we don't have in school and there's no kids in place, that you're proposing that we still have masks in place? Or vaccination in place, even if it's in the gymnasium, which we don't oversee, right? That's the rep committee going forward. So how does that work?
Right. So the, the school has care and custody over the gym. So this would be, we mandate masks in the building? Am I incorrect on this? We mandate masks in the building?
We, we don't have any agency over the rec department.
No, but we have agency over the gymnasium.
Right. But for us to get involved with weekend and evening programming that is not derived from school. It, it's basketball games and things like that. For, we have no way of monitoring vaccination status of recreation participants.
Okay, so I would be interested in looking into, into that too. Maybe meeting with the rec department and considering that.
Yes. Um, if that is, if it does end up being that during whatever, the weekend basketball, evening basketball, whatever it is, then I would suggest that we include language in this policy that establishes what time, either during school operating hours and at school, organized functions. And then those other types of when the recreation committee holds something or someone eventually, hopefully tries to rent the space or something that that is a different. That would be a discussion for another time. But
with all due respect, that does not fall under our purview.
That's what I
John, am I correct?
No, no, the chair is correct. The care and control of this building belongs to the school committee. It does not belong to the rec committee. It does not belong to the town council.
That I understand.
It does not belong to some citizens board. The chair is correct that the care and control of this building is vested in the school committee. The school committee sets policies. You have a building use policy that you spend considerable amount of time. That dictates how this building is being used. So in terms of what the committee wishes to do for policy, that's up to the committee. In terms of what the law, the chair is correct.
So
So we have to tweak the policy or the building use form.
So here comes the second part of this question is that if we're requiring everybody to be vaccinated to come into the building. In instances as tonight, we've had more people online, but in person tonight than we've had in quite some time. Are you looking to deny people access to a public meeting?
We are offering them an alternative to an online.
Right. But if they don't have, as you know, we, we ran through a lot of circumstances last year with, with remote learning and having problems with people, internet access and what have you. So so if that's not an option for somebody, because again, they don't necessarily have to be within the school. It could be anybody that walks in off the street that can come in here and that they don't know that. It, it seems like that this is setting us up to actually deny people to the public to actually be able to walk in off the street and actually be able to view this, to view a public meeting that's going on.
I see where you're coming from.
And then, then that brings up a question to John is like, what is that doing to us legally? Is what, what is that setting us up for, for us denying somebody access to come in and see a public meeting?
The right of access is the ability to participate in the meeting. It's not necessarily the access to sit in this particular chair or to sit in that chair or so forth. The right of access is to participate. And I believe that you are adequately addressing that by the use of regard to the technical issues of Zoom. I did have that come up in one school, in one school committee where they had five hundred people and that was the limit on Zoom. And they stopped the meeting until they got some people to go to simulcast, which that district both simulcast and uses Zoom. Until they did that though, and they got the number down to five hundred, they stopped the meeting for about ten minutes. The ability, the access is the ability to participate. And as we've seen tonight, there has been an awful lot of participation.
We also have a phone-in option. I'm assuming we could add a clause to the bottom. We have other considerations that if someone needed technical assistance or some other ideas of how to access our meeting, because they couldn't attend, we could offer that as well. If we felt like it was needed.
I guess part, part of me on this is, is saying that you, you can, yes, you can say that we have multiple ways for you to access us, but then I also look at it and I also say the flip side to that is that now we're separating people. And we're saying that the people that are vaccinated, you're welcome to come in in person and come here. But if you're not vaccinated, that you're not welcome to our school to come and watch our meeting and participate in person. Just like some of the parents last night, and I, I got to sit and listen to your meeting, was that some of the things that, that came up was as far as like the, the the parent-teacher conferences where they were saying it wasn't as personable because they weren't able to come in. And, and I understand that and I, and I can appreciate that comment. So it's not the same. It's not the same when you're doing it remote. So if, so I kind of feel like we're, we are we're, we're separating people. There's no other way to put it. There's, we're not, we're not being open-minded about that as far as letting some people, people come into the building to actually be able to come in and participate. Because I, I kind of go back to when Hannah pushed the idea, or not pushed, but was in charge of us getting back into the school to have our public meetings come back in here. And I said to myself, when we came back in, we didn't have to be vaccinated. When we came in, we weren't even wearing these masks when we came back in.
That was though concurrent with the current state data and, and that was what informed those decisions. And like we've stated multiple times when we've talked about different COVID-related policies is that this is not forever, and we are by no means trying to exclude anybody. That is why we have the Zoom option. I believe Jonathan can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we have the ability to also livestream to YouTube if we want to. We can add that as an option. We have the phone-in option. We also record these meetings and then they're posted so that you can view later. So that maybe doesn't follow up for one-on-one live participation, but then all of us have school emails that they can then ask questions that then we can put on a future meeting. And then like I suggested to put an end date on this policy is that say we stay at only sixty percent vaccinated, which is what we're at right now in town. It's about sixty percent of our population is vaccinated. Say that that's how this goes for the rest of the time. But this time next year, COVID's gone and forty percent of the population still isn't vaccinated, but it's no longer a threat. Those people are going to be welcomed back in. It's, this is just to protect everyone in this room and the public and the community participating in a school committee meeting.
I, I think with our policies around COVID and vaccinations and masks. Speak for myself. My thought process is first of all that we need to keep our kids as safe as we possibly can. And with all of these measures, hopefully get to a point where we can come to school without masks. We, we need to put measures in place where we can keep our transmissions down, keep everybody safe. Keep everybody safe so that we can get to a better place and end this and have maskless days eventually.
And and I understand that nobody wants anything to happen to any of their kids and and I and I get that. But at the same time. I also look at is that these parents that are here or are at home. Are the. A big part of. You know, their learning, whether it's with the teachers or what have you, and to for us to sit there and say. Um if you're not vaccinated, we're not going to allow you to come in.
They can still participate, Michael, as as he outlined.
How about a, how about if we go back to um parent-teacher conferences? If we were afforded to be able to go back into person. That person's not going to be able to come back into the school to have a parent-teacher conference, to have that one-on-one interaction. Um and I can, and I will speak for my myself because. I have a daughter that's only the younger ages and and I've had many other kids go through, you know. You come in. To see your your teacher, talk to your teacher, but you also get to see what the kids are doing in class and and they. Put out their display on their desk of, you know, we did this or we did that. Again, I go back to that whole separation that we're not going to let those parents do that, and I don't think that's fair to those parents to do that. I understand you're trying to keep everything safe for everybody, but. We should not be not including those people, those those parents that are there and I and I, this policy, you're doing that.
So we're we're, we are including them. We're not keeping anyone from communicating with our.
Well, you're not allowing them to come to the school though, right?
Unless they're vaccinated, yes.
So which goes back to, again, we can't control people's personal lives and what they do and what their decisions are to do. And that is completely up to them. If they feel like they want to be vaccinated or they feel like they don't want to be vaccinated. That's a personal choice. We can't, we can't. We can't determine what they do and and I respect that. But. Again, this policy is saying that if you're not vaccinated and we have. Which was a concern and I'm sure you can agree, last night the parent-teacher conferences not being in person. Was was a concern by some of the people that participated. What you're saying, if we pass this right now, that they are not going to be allowed in the school. And as a parent, I think I'd be very, very upset that I'm not being allowed to come into my afforded the same opportunity. As another parent that may be vaccinated, you know, and and I think that's wrong to do that to to.
Um do we even know if we're going to have in-person parent-teacher conferences? Who knows?
Would be to do what we did last year and do it virtually.
Open discussion or?
It's a discussion of the committee right now and then we'll move on to the, yep.
There are also three in the audience.
Sorry, I'm just trying to remember what I wanted to say to Mike. I I think we all agree here that nobody is trying to take anybody's. Personal freedom away and choosing to be vaccinated or not, but just like with everything else in life, your choices have a consequence. And the consequence of not being vaccinated at this point is you have to participate virtually. We are not saying that you're not allowed to participate at all. We're saying that there's another option for you. And there's also an option for people who are vaccinated, who still feel like it's still safer to participate via Zoom. We also have to take into consideration the health of our teachers who. They might all be vaccinated, but that doesn't mean you. Like people have pointed out, there are still risks in getting COVID and some of our teachers. Are in high-risk factor positions, which they might not feel comfortable having students' parents come in and meet with them and. Again, like we are doing all of this to shorten the amount of time that we have to do any of these mitigation efforts and. If it just so happens this year's parent-teacher conferences have to be online. Then we are doing everything we can to make next year's parent-teacher conferences in person and it. Like I cannot emphasize enough that these are temporary measures to keep everybody safe. Right now, and that includes teachers, that includes students, that includes parents, that includes the community as a whole.
So. That's one example.
Also, sorry, Mike, I I just, another thought popped into my head. This is not up for a vote tonight. So if anything, the second read would be next month and next month. Maybe cross our fingers, COVID could be completely gone and we won't need any of these policies, but that is not necessarily the case right now. We have to do what is. At the moment, the safest thing for everybody.
And and I understand that we got to, we'll vote after the second read. And and I think that's a confusion sometimes, but maybe parents don't just, don't know. So that's one example um as far as the parent conferences, so the. It's coming up on the eighteenth, was it Jade? So and that's going to be a multi-step process going forward. And and you want to be be able to solicit more um feedback from them. And again, I'll use that as the same example, so if it's not a parent-teacher conference, when we're not dealing with teachers and worrying about face-to-face interaction. Again, that's going to be in the same case scenario where you're not allowing parents to come in here and actually be able to.
Well, that is why I made the suggestion earlier that for applicable events, we accept either a PCR test as probably suggested. Or hold a rapid testing event in conjunction with that if and. Are you, are you in support of that idea in the policy as well? If.
I would have to think about that to be quite honest with you and. You're you're hitting me with that right now, so I got to think about it and be able to toss that or toss that idea around. I just.
And everybody gets access. Then we're not denying anybody. You're either vaccinated or you take a PCR or PCR test two to four days before you come in and take the rapid test and immediately gain entry. So it's a nice protection.
Right, and and it, that sounds great, but then you got to. Where are you going to go do the PCR test and where, who's going to pay for that, for these parents to come into?
Rhode Island testing sites are all free. Um you can get at multiple state-run test sites and then I also suggested that the school, since we have the ability to administer tests, that. We look into being able to hold a simultaneous rapid testing event with applicable events, whether it's the Studio J forums. Whether it's a band and chorus concert, whether it's graduation, if it doesn't happen to be outside this year. That's why I made that suggestion, so that we're not prohibiting access to these most important events as well. Some events, as we've all learned during COVID, can be moved online and yes, they're not the same. That was my argument, Mike, when. We moved from Zoom to in-person is that Zoom conversations aren't always equitable or. Um easy for back and forth conversation, but unfortunately, we're living in a pandemic and we kind of have to make. A few changes here and there when we can, and that's why. Again, I suggested that some things are in line for those who are unvaccinated, some things are. Um testing option available for applicable events, just so that we can cover all our bases and everybody. Is able to participate either in person or virtually. And really, I hope you consider my suggestions when we discuss for the second read next month.
I really like um the direction that's going, that where, you know, this is going. Um I am one hundred percent in favor of the vaccination mandate and and. Kickstarted these discussions in August and it's taken quite a bit for us to flesh it out. Regarding um after-hours use by other organizations, we would have to tweak the building use facility form. And include language around the person responsible would be also responsible for ensuring. Vaccination status, et cetera. And I guess they would fall into visitors, after-hours, visitors, evenings and weekends, pickleball, basketball, all of that. And. I'm not sure that you would want to loop in. I guess the testing option would apply if they're visitors after hours. Under the purview of, you know, pickleball first, yeah, missing a shoe or whatever. So I think that's more than fair. And it's equitable in terms of accessing. School-related and community-related events in this film.
Anyone on the, else on the committee wanting to discuss this? I'm just going to say again, this is the first read, so this is when we. All sat and come up with better ideas, ideas we like, ideas we don't like and. Turn, change things in the policies that work out better. Yep, go ahead.
Again, Sal Marinosi from Oliver Lane. I think I, I'm I'm not getting from the committee what the objective is. What's your objective with the mandates? In other words, um by the way, I'm vaccinated. So I'm not anti-vaccination. But. An unvaccinated person poses no threat to me.
In terms of, you can still catch COVID.
So can a vaccinated person.
Agreed.
Gets COVID.
Agreed.
So there's no guarantee. It's very low for me if I'm vaccinated.
Correct.
So the person that's unvaccinated poses very little threat to me. Okay, now, now, when you say that. If everybody wants to get vaccinated, wonderful, get vaccinated. I I agree. But there are people that can't get vaccinated.
Yes.
For various reasons.
And those are, those are the type of people we are also trying to protect. It's the people who are medically unable to get vaccinated. The students in our school that are ineligible for vaccination at this point. Um and people who choose to not be vaccinated. We are trying to protect all of those people. That is our our goal.
That's your goal, so you're saying that your objective is to get everybody vaccinated in the, that comes into this this building?
No, our objective is to. Provide a safe learning environment for our students and one way that we can do that is to encourage everyone to be vaccinated. Which we have done, we've passed a resolution.
That's a big word, you said encourage, now it's set a mandate.
No, the vaccine mandate comes into play when you enter this public building. If you want to enter this building to participate in person, you have. If this passes next month, if it, we have not voted yet, if it passes next month. It will then be required that you show proof of vaccination. And or like I've suggested, a negative test upon entry for an event and. Again, this will be reevaluated hopefully at the start of next year if it passes and. COVID is different.
Have that test at at the door.
That would be the plan.
I I have suggested that, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Donna Maguski fifty-one, Stromper, true. Broadly speaking. This has gone all the way to the Supreme Court that you can mandate vaccines. That it is not a undue violation of your constitutional rights because it is in service of the public. So I think that we need to try to center that, that is a hundred and sixteen-year-old legal precedent. Um which has not gone unchallenged and still stands. Um and I also would like to point out, you know, the false dichotomy that is being perpetuated, which is. That. We are taking, by by the school committee requiring a vaccine to enter the building, that we are taking away. Your ability to participate. Like Hannah said. There are consequences to these choices. And. The choice that you are potentially setting yourself up for is. More important that I not submit to a test. Or not submit to a scientifically proven, safe and effective vaccine. Or is it more important to me that I see my kid's schoolwork in the classroom? We're making a decision. I've participated in virtual IEPs and five oh four meetings. And I said at the policy meeting last night, you know, these are arguably the higher needs students where that connection is that much more important. And I don't feel that the. Interactions, while they might be different, are so dramatically. Curtailed that I cannot feel like. The teachers that my student is with all day. Knows me, knows my child and can serve his educational needs. Because more than anything. As a parent, I have to center his safety. Before my comfort and again, this is a scientifically proven, safe and effective vaccine. In terms of the, you know, people talk about long-term effects. The longest onset delayed reaction to a vaccine, according to the Johns Hopkins. The the man who's in charge of the vaccine program there is six months out. The first trials were in last spring. If there was going to be widespread delayed negative reactions, we would see them already and we aren't. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna.
Thank you, Jenna. Okay, anyone, any more comments in this room? Yes.
On the room first, um. So I'm new in town, um and. Moving on that, the building time, when things are open, not open. Oh, sorry, my name is Matt Nicole, forty B Old Main Road. New in town. Building on the, you know, times when people may or may not be allowed in. I heard a rumor that building happens in this building. So I don't know, like, please include something about that.
Yep.
I'm I'm very excited. It would be a shame if that's.
Yes, thank you.
Going to the the text of the document that was shared, I'd be curious to know what the word vaccine and vaccinate means.
Okay.
Um there are three different popular vaccines right now. There's Pfizer, Moderna, Johnson and Johnson. Um all under emergency use authorization. There is an FDA-approved version of a Johnson and Johnson vaccine. I called them today, literally, and I can give you the phone number. It is not available in the United States of America. So if you are going to mandate an FDA-approved vaccine, there are not. So if the word vaccine does not.
Pfizer is FDA-approved.
Correct, it is not available in the United States of America.
The Pfizer.
The Pfizer product that is an FDA-approved has not been produced for availability in the United States of America. I called them today. You can call them too. Okay. But um if the word vaccine just means you've taken a generally applicable thing that stops it. Will we accept the vaccines from AstraZeneca, from Russia, and the Sinovac in China? If not, why not? These are all fully agreed-upon vaccines. I would like to know why.
Um we didn't.
I'm I'm just, I'm, I'll I'll email these, these.
Please, yes, please email those suggestions.
There's a difference between the FDA-approved, the emergency use authorization, and the ones that are from foreign countries. Can I make my own vaccine, shoot something into my arm and show up? I'm asking this question legitimately. There must be a definition of what this means. Because if vaccinated means you've taken two shots of Pfizer, when, who decides what fully vaccinated means? What happens when it's three? What happens when it's four? What happens when it's five? And I I will email it, so I'm just quickly trying to get through them. In terms of keeping children safe, how many children in the state of Rhode Island have died of COVID nineteen? Does anyone know?
Zero.
Zero.
Great, okay, so, and none of them are vaccinated. So I'm not sure why we're talking about keeping them safe if they're not dying, but that's okay. Since we know the vaccines suppress symptoms, since we know they suppress symptoms. And we know that people who are vaccinated can still spread. Please include in the policy something about testing the vaccinated. They pose the greatest threat since we don't know if they're sick. The unvaccinated will become ill, they will show it, and they will probably stay home because they're uncomfortable. Finally. The the consequences to choices sentence sounds like a threat and I just really don't appreciate it, so. That's really all I have to say or ask. Oh, I mean, it's been out for six months and it was tested last spring. We know that the largest, besides age. We know that the largest impact on whether or not people die of COVID is seasonality. So if you test a vaccine starting in the spring through the summer, you do not know the effect of when people actually get sick. Thank you. And I'll email you all these questions.
Okay, thank you.
I would really appreciate if you did send us your um suggestions because I think it is important to define exactly what we mean and. It codify that in the language of the policy. I'd also appreciate if you shared your research with us as well because I'm really interested to learn more about these vaccines. Um and I'd also like to point you to the new page on the school's website, which lists all of the resources that.
I I was sent all of them. If you read the research, it's it's not compelling, so please read it. I I I totally agree.
And arguments similar to yours have been been. And arguments similar to yours have been, been made in courts recently and judges have been throwing them out. Been referring to Jacobson, Massachusetts, nineteen oh five. It is still the, what rules the land.
I'm excited. I'm excited to see this point out, but I don't hear anyone saying this thing. So I'm saying.
Okay, thank you. Hi, Jonathan, we want to go to.
Sure, I'm going, I guess I'll sort of alphabetically. This thing isn't sort of, I don't know. Stephanie Kavanaugh is the first one in the audience. You should be able to unmute yourself. Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Kavanaugh, sixty-three Old Stone Church Road. And the last speaker actually brought up the same question that I had. And that was with Wilbur School being the polling place for the town of Little Compton, what plan is in place? When he asked this question, everybody kind of nodded and said, yeah, we know. But what is the plan for allowing people in to vote? You're mentioning requiring proof of vaccine, proof of test. With today being the last day to file for a mail-in ballot, will this next read be held before or after the November second election?
I didn't hear the last bit of what you said, Stephanie.
I had asked if the next read was going to be before or after the election, the next election in the gymnasium. And what the plan is for requiring proof of vaccine or test for coming in to vote.
So, so if this passes, the next read, and we've had three or four reads, the earliest this could pass would be at the November meeting. Just past the second, which is, yes, definitely past the second. And one of the great things that comes, that happens from having these meetings and discussion is someone brings up voting, which we hadn't considered. So that is something that we will have to consider and come up with, with some information around that, some policy around that. We'll have to think about how, how that, how we would go about that.
Thank you. And the other half of my question, just because I was unable to attend the meeting virtually or in person last night, being how will stu-, how will parents be admitted into the school to pick up their children? If they don't have proof of vaccine on them, will they be admitted in to pick up their kids if they're dismissed, say, you know, from the nurse's office early?
So I would imagine this policy takes effect after you leave the front office. So I would assume that children would be brought to the front office for parents to pick up.
Thank you.
Yep.
The next person in the virtual audience is Jen Rocha. You should be able to unmute.
Hi, Jen Rocha, one oh five Willow. I have so many questions. First, I wanted to start with Ms. A. Up. With all due respect, your statistics are quite flawed because anyone who's vaccinated in Massachusetts is not reported to the Rhode Island Board of Health. I know this to be true. Were reported. I work in Massachusetts, so that's where I was vaccinated. Being, you know, as it is, a lot of people do their pharmacy at Westport Apothecary, none of that is reported to the Rhode Island Department of Health. That all goes to the Massachusetts Immunization Information System. So I think that you should disallow that statistic.
Like everyone else. For clarification of which statistic you're referring to.
You said that sixty percent of residents are vaccinated and forty percent are not.
Okay. I, I was taking that from the Rhode Island Department of Health and I, I trust your information that it is not necessarily reported. And I am fully aware that that's an estimation.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that's not being taken into play with this policy. And like everyone else, I have a concern with voting. We have a large number of elderly residents here. You know, that are not going to be able to access testing. Right now PCR testing is five to eight days out in most places. Rapid tests are only fifty-eight percent accurate, depending on which company you go with. So I think, you know, we, we need to think about outside of school, how is that affecting our kids? If, if we put this mandate on full use of the school, what is a night basketball game of adults with no visitors going to do for kids during the school day? It's not going to harm or help them. So I just, I think we need to look at the bigger picture of after-school hours with that. Will religious exemptions be in play for this mandate? And if so, how will those be collected?
We do not have a religious exemption in this policy right now.
Okay. That's another discussion for another time, I assume. And what is your reasoning for that?
That there has not been a religion and an organized official religion that has come forward with the need for an exemption.
You mean to the school committee or in general? Because there are many religions, organized religions that don't allow vaccines. I'm, just to get the record straight, I'm pro-vaccine, but I'm also pro-choice. And I know, you know, there are people that their religion prevents that.
Okay, our attorney would like to speak on.
Would be great.
Judge Mary McElroy, who is a federal judge sitting in the United States District Court in Providence, has ruled that a religious exemption is not required.
Okay, so are we not taking religious exemptions for regular school vaccines? Or is it just this particular one because it's a global pandemic?
And again, Judge McElroy has said that they are not required. If you disagree with Judge McElroy's decision, you can join anyone. And indeed, I don't believe anyone has taken an appeal from her decision.
I'm, I'm not sure why that was the answer I was given. I just asked a question if, you know, that was going to be the case for all school vaccines.
And again, I'm indicating that with regard to the COVID vaccine, Judge McElroy has ruled that it is not required. And I appreciate that you may disagree with the judge's ruling. If you disagree with the judge's ruling.
Sir, I'm not disagreeing with the judge's ruling. I'm asking a question and asking one of the school committee members if they would answer whether or not all vaccines are going to be not. Okay, thank you. That was all, that was, I'm not sure why it took so long to get to that. My other question is, how are you forming this policy? Is this based on your own opinions or is this based on clinical studies? And if so, if so, is there a place where you're going to post the link so that everyone can review that literature as well?
Is, is this link live, Maya? I'm sorry. Because the link to the draft policy live in the agenda? Yes, it's a public document. Okay. So this draft, and I'd like to remind everyone, it is a draft, is public currently. It's attached to the agenda. It's a link in the agenda that everyone should be able to access now. And like all policy, we, we reach out to other school departments, other government agencies. We reach out to our attorney, our administration. Hannah and I discuss it. We come up with a draft. Oftentimes our drafts are drastically changed. We have to start somewhere. We, in some cases, including this one, we go to scientific, peer-reviewed material and other medical journals and documents and data.
Okay. I'm just making sure that there's some scientific backing behind it because we know that the efficacy of these vaccines may be as high as six to eight months. So is someone going to review the vaccine cards to make sure someone is still within that time? Like, it's just, it's much bigger. I'm not trying to be a thorn in your side. I'm just trying to give you things to think about.
Yep.
And who, you know, who's going to administer these rapid tests? And if you're looking at voting, how long the line can get in a big election, like this, you know, a school committee here. You know, people turn out because they are passionate and how are you going to do that? I just think there's so, there's so much more to consider that hasn't been considered. So I won't take up any more of your time with my opinions. I just wanted to give you something to think about.
Thank you. And I would encourage anyone to feel free to email us our concerns. Once a policy is adopted, we can always go back and change it and tweak it. It's never set in stone. So if it does get voted on and we come up with better information, different information, something that we have overlooked, we can always go back and amend the policy as well.
Just the other thing is, I think you're sending mixed messages. You're saying that you want the kids to get back to normal and, and we're doing all these things, but yet you're taking away basic parent-teacher conferences. I, I think that you just need to pick a line and stick with it.
Okay, we're not taking away parent-teacher.
Well, it's going to, I thought I heard Ms. A. Say it was going to be virtual.
Principal Whip said that they were considering doing parent-teacher conferences virtually. I had suggested that maybe that was something we do in a COVID year. Okay. I am not a, I am not a proponent, proponent of one hundred percent everything distance. I totally understand the, the hardships that parents and families and students face when things are online and the types of experiences that are being taken away because of COVID. I myself was a student during the beginning of the pandemic and totally did not like Zoom at all whatsoever. So we are not trying to exclude or take away experiences. We just have to work with the current situation that we're in right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person's username is D Wardell. If you could unmute yourself, state your full name and address.
Hey, doing Dave Wardell, five East Main Road. I'd like to start by saying, you know, I, I understand the need for the vaccine mandate and during school hours. And I fully support as a local business owner, you know, the idea of ensuring that my employees are vaccinated if, you know, called upon to, to perform any kind of service at the school. And I'm going to raise a point simply out of caution, out of overreach. You know, in regards to, let's say, the Open Meetings Act. I mean, if you Google, you know, the Attorney General of Rhode Island, they've, you know, their latest guidance document specifically speaks to the fact that regardless of, you know, whether you're, you know, I understand, yes, they have access to the meeting. However, they specifically speak to the fact that they, uh, public, members of the public have to be allowed access into the meeting. And it, and it kind of lays out some of those, obviously, you know, they brought up the voting and stuff. But I just would caution or, or, or hope that you would look into the legality of, you know, you know, restrictions or maybe narrow this to, you know, school hours or, or something thereof. And again, you know, I, I support the idea of, of, you know, the keeping our kids safe in, in that sense. But I think the open meetings piece is something that would open up the town to litigation or, or the school to litigation.
Thank you.
Next is Andrew Ryan. Now you can unmute.
Thank you very much again. And I very appreciate, I very much appreciate you taking on this policy. I, I wish it would have been a little sooner and faster, but I'm glad you're getting to it now. I have a, a good friend and colleague that their kids are in Portsmouth. And Portsmouth has a very similar policy to this that they put in place on September ninth, I believe. I, I'm always stunned by the amount of misinformation that you have to ingest at, at these meetings. And it's, it's very, it must be very difficult to, to, to try to comprehend, you know, where, where the truth and facts are. And I, I hope that you're relying on the Department of Health and the, and the good people at the, the state agencies and public health officials and, and not casual members of, of the audience to, to make important public health decisions. I, I would relay that, that the numbers at the state level for Little Compton are in fact accurate. I actually checked in with this and Massachusetts and Rhode Island do communicate with each other and pass those, that information along. That's just one of the urban legends that, that proliferates is the, the next urban legend that, that I heard was this idea that rapid tests somehow aren't, are only fifty-four percent accurate. And it's just not true. They're exceptionally accurate at picking up infectious people. They're, they're in the, the upper nineties. They're so good that it's actually the preferred method for, you know, checking people when you, when you don't have access to a rapid, when you don't have, within a twenty-four hour access to a PCR result. And we spent, you know, a year working on this at, at a university to get our, keep our university safe and, and looking at options. So, you know, I just am really encouraged that the school committee is, is looking at, at this policy. I would encourage you to stay with our Department of Health officials and other public health officials when it comes to information about vaccines and, and I'm just always disheartened to hear the amount of misinformation that is out there. I, I would suggest that you include language that says FDA-approved vaccine because we certainly wouldn't want a community member to make their own vaccine and inject themselves with that or Clorox or, or anything else. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Megan Gonzalez, you're up next.
Thank you. Megan Gonzalez, nineteen South Shore Road. I just really want to echo everything that Andrew just said and really encourage Hannah and the rest of the policy committee to stick with the facts that are listed on the Department of Health website. I think that you guys have been going in an awesome direction and really following the most current data that you're receiving from the CDC. The policy corresponds with the science-based, fact-based actions being taken from OSHA for workplaces broadly. So I think keep up the good work and please stay following your, following science, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have?
I see nobody in the virtual audience right now.
Okay. Any more?
One more.
Okay.
Jen Rocha, you can unmute yourself.
Hi, I just have two more quick questions. One is a statement, one is a question. I do know to the gentleman who refuted my statement that these two states don't speak to each other. I am not listed in the Rhode Island Board of Health as a license holder as having a vaccine. And I did indeed have it in January. When I called, I was told by them, they do not communicate with Massachusetts. Secondly, my question is, I can't see that whole document. What is, what is the consequence, as you're calling it, for teachers who are not vaccinated? What are their options? Will they, will they lose their jobs? Will they?
This policy does not cover teacher. Teachers are a union. And we went to the union and we negotiated with them. And we have a memorandum of understanding with them that will be voted on later on this evening.
So, I'm sorry, could you just clarify then who this policy is for? For visitors?
Yes, adults that enter the building that are not in the union.
So what about ancillary staff?
So any non-union staff.
Staff. So will they lose their jobs if they're not vaccinated is my question?
I don't, I'm not sure. I, I don't know if we have anyone that is not covered.
Everyone is vaccinated. It's not an issue.
It's, it's everyone is.
But if you hire someone who isn't, I mean, if you're making a policy, I'm just curious what, I don't.
Right. So I'm trying to think of who it would be. So we have, in our sub-policy, we have.
Your substitute teachers perhaps, right?
Just like, just like all employers in the country, the school, the Little Compton School Department can require that employees be vaccinated. With regard to unionized employees, we have to sit down and talk with the union in terms of how that process will work. But it can be a requirement of the job that you be vaccinated.
Okay, thank you. So if, if a staff member is not, so if they don't get their booster, they've, they've gotten their two shots and then they don't get their booster shot, does that count as fully vaccinated?
And again, the school committee has the ability to set that policy in terms.
Who's asking the question, yes or no?
The answer is yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, they will lose their job if they're not vaccinated. Thank you.
That will be, the school committee can make that decision at the time. But the answer is the school committee has that ability to do it, just like any other employer in the United States of America.
Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Yep.
Two more, three more hands. All right, Stephanie D.
All right, Stephanie D. You can unmute yourself.
Actually, this is Justin Dion again, 24 Amy Hot Path. I was just curious why nobody has mentioned anything about natural immunity as, you know, with regards to this policy. It's, it's already kind of widely known that it is just as effective as being vaccinated with, you know, your ability to get, you know, to get it again. People who have natural immunity are getting it at almost the same rate as the breakthrough cases. So I was just curious as to what, how that pertains to this policy.
Yep. Um, so we are following the recommendations of the Rhode Island Department of Health and CDC, which, um, doesn't, they're still.
Oh.
They're still recommending that even if you have had COVID-19, that you still get vaccinated. And in regards to the breakthrough cases, um, that the chances of a fully vaccinated person having a breakthrough case is at around 1%. So that's not significant enough to center a whole policy specifically around that.
No, I, no, I understand that. I was just wondering if, if, you know, proof, a proof that you've, you know, that you've been infected in the past has any equality to a vaccination in your eyes as far as regards to this policy goes?
In this draft, it does not, but that is something that we can look at and take into consideration for the next version of the draft.
All right, that would be great. And also, I just had one more question. I think this may have been covered or not, but as far as in-person parent teacher conferences, would it be possible to have the option of doing a rapid test, you know, to be able to attend something like that?
My suggestion, sorry, Paul.
I was just gonna say that we've, we've covered this a few times and we are gonna consider it for applicable events. Yes.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Next person is Chardier. You can unmute.
Kimberly Chardier, nine High Meadow Road. I just want to say I keep hearing, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, that I keep hearing that we're doing this for the safety of the kids and that you have the best interest of the kids at heart. When, I think in reality, you're doing this because of your own fears. I mean, you have fear of this virus, but you're also given the choice to get a vaccine to help you. Well, maybe those who don't want to be vaccinated have their fears as well. Like, no one knows what the potential long-term health outcomes of the vaccine is. So why shouldn't they be given the choice of whether or not they want to be vaccinated? I think the school committee really needs to reconsider the vaccine mandates across the board for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Allison Camara, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address.
Hi, Allison Leaming Camara at 398 Long Highway. So I did speak last night at the subcommittee meeting, and I do want to touch upon a few of the things that I mentioned last night that, you know, we've been hearing, we're hearing everybody's sides of how everyone's feeling with this new policy that is being discussed here. And I too do not like the policy. I think that we do all want to keep the children safe, but this policy is dividing and discriminating against people who are not vaccinated. And we, as a community, we should be coming together during this time. But this, this policy is just, it's going to divide us. And instead of the mandatory vaccination, I think the rapid testing is a wonderful idea. They're doing it at many places of employment, and the rapid testing is working for those people that I've spoken with. And I just don't think that anyone that wants to be employed by the Little Compton School District should feel that they're being pressured to be vaccinated in order to even look at a job to work at the school. And so many people have worked through the pandemic, and they've, they've taught our children, they've cleaned the school, they've done their job. Their nurses, their doctors, their teachers, they're, they're you guys also. And forcing someone to be vaccinated or mandating, I guess would be a better word, mandating someone to be vaccinated in order to work at the Little Compton School, at Wolver McMahon School. I just, I don't think that's right. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Andrew Ryan.
Thank you again. I, I would like to encourage you again to refer to competent medical advice in the Department of Health when you're making this decision. Please know that there's exceptional evidence out there that shows that if you have been infected prior, your immunity is nowhere near as good as if you've been vaccinated. There's exceptional literature out that I can share with you, but the Department of Health will have that information. And I would encourage you to be very careful about amending your policy when you get information from the public.
Thank you. Um, I see that there's something in the chat. Is that just Mariah's?
Yeah.
Phone before? Okay. Hi, we're all good here on our discussion on the first read? So I'm, I'm assuming not, not the typical journey of the policy, but I'm assuming that the policy committee will reconvene with this information. And when we bring the second read back to the committee, it will have some changes in it. I don't know what, we'll see. And then we can decide from there whether we want to vote or do more changes. Okay?
When is your policy meeting coming back up? Just, you don't, subcommittee meeting coming back up?
We, we do it when we can meet, so it's always posted. We follow OMA rules. We try to do it the week of the school committee meeting, but it also depends on our availability.
The only thing I'd like to just push out to the people is just to let them know that if you want another chance of having any input to follow back up with your policy, subcommittee, be on the lookout. It's gonna be, it'll be posted on the website, the school website, also the Secretary of State's website.
The school always notifies everyone that the.
It's always on Parent Square. I know the Little Compton Democratic Town Committee always shares links. I've recently started posting the links to these meetings on my personal school committee Facebook page as well. So it is on multiple avenues. You will be notified well in advance of any subcommittee or regular meeting of this governmental body.
Yep.
Allison Camara in the virtual audience there, you can unmute.
Hi, did you guys also write down setting the policy end date to the end of the current school year?
We, we have that in our notes as a possible edit.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep. Okay, 9.3. Consider, discuss, and vote to amend the school committee bylaws. So, our bylaws are a small book. And the attorney's office went through and made some grammatical and edits and some other edits to attach appendix and such. But the big change in here, first read, yes, was that we have a lot of subcommittees and, um, there doesn't seem to be an ending for them. So we have some subcommittees and, um, other kinds of boards that kind of hang on for forever. And sometimes they don't meet for a couple of years, and then we, we just needed some words in here that would help us to decide when a committee would end members of it and when we would renew it. So this is going to help us do that. If they don't have any questions on this, anything they want to add about that? It's the first read, yep. But we can't make any changes if no one comments, so. We're good? No one wants to comment on the bylaws? Okay, um, action item 9.4. Consider, discuss, and vote to approve any requests for information from administration and/or legal counsel. Anyone on the committee have any requests of legal counsel or administration? And, great. Oh, go ahead.
Just of the administration, some of the parents talked tonight kind of about how the communication broke down when there is a positive case and/or a child that's quarantined. Can we see that policy in writing, kind of like how the ducks fall? Who's communicating with who? Is it, is it Principal Whip? Is it Nurse Dunn? Is it the child's teacher? Is it the superintendent? Uh, I just think that to get some sort of, uh.
Like you want to see the chain of command?
Yeah, because I could tell you, my story's different from their story. So clearly, we're all under a different guise here. Let's see how the, the chain of command works out and then kind of really hold to that. So everybody's on the same page and we're not having any surprises for the superintendent in these meetings.
Maybe in that same, um, spirit, we could have a discussion next month about the plan going forward for, I don't want to call it distance learning to confuse people that there's no synchronous learning, but what is going to be that plan moving forward for students who are out in isolation or quarantine? Just so that we can have a public meeting, everybody knows what it is and moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
I should cast a question, just to follow my mind on that medical, where to be, where to be over named road. Tonight was the first I've seen anything from my child's classroom in your presentation, and I'm not trying to call any individual teachers out, but I know these times are difficult. I literally have had no communications at all. It's been over a month. So, and through the great fun, I've heard they're waiting to tell us things. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I don't know if other, other parents had the same experience. My daughter showed up at home with a computer one day. I know computers very well. I have no idea. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Um, so now I'm gonna, I'm gonna explain, because we have a lot of new people in the audience. This next part, we're going to consider and vote to go into executive session under Rhode Island law. And so when we do, we will not be live anymore. It'll be a private discussion between the committee, attorney, superintendent. Everyone will be asked to leave this room. Our Zoom meeting will be on pause, I guess, or I don't know the technical terms, but will be blacked out. And when we're done with the executive session, we will return into open session where we will have, some more discussion and a vote in open session. So I believe when the screen goes blank, it lets you know that we're in executive session and, but you can leave it up. And when we come back, you'll hear the chatter of us returning and hear us open up the meeting again. Is that fair? Is that a good? Okay, super. So I would like to consider and vote, I'd like to consider a motion to enter into executive session under RIGL section 4246, 5A2, by way of roll call.
Second.
Holly Allen.
Hi.
Tabasati.
Hi.
Hannah Yeh.
Hi.
Peter Cunningham.
Hi.
Mike Gertra.
All right.
All right.
I'm gonna make a notification that no votes were taken while we were in executive session. I would consider a motion to seal the minutes of executive session.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Twelve-one, consider, discuss, and vote to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Little Compton School Committee and the Little Compton Educational Support Personnel. Do I have a motion?
You have a motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Twelve-two, consider, discuss, and vote to approve memorandum of understanding between the Little Compton School Committee and the Little Compton Teachers Association. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do not agree with the twelve-point-two, and I will be voting no on this.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to one. Consider and vote to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you all for tuning in.